All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order just have a statement. You may begin.
Father God, we thank you for this meeting. We're about to come into the day, Lord, and we ask you to give us strength and give us wisdom to know what to do in the city of Hartford and the people of Hartford, Lord. Lead their minds and touch them today, Lord, in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
All right. We've got two visitors. Would you all like to address the council tonight?
I'm all working for the interfaith.
Do what?
We're here for the interfaith.
Okay.
We don't serve. We do reserve the right to make a comment here for a few minutes.
That's fine. That's fine. All right, we'll take a look at our minutes from our last meeting, the May 23 meeting. Have time to look those over. Whenever you get them to look over, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes. Motion?
Make the motion.
All right, second?
Please.
Any discussion? All favor, up with the hand. All right, thank you. All right, you've got a new visitor. Would you like to address the council?
I'd love anybody to have anything to read.
Okay, that's nice. Appreciate you being here. All right, Terrence, it's up to you now.
I was brought a deed and a copy of a survey plat from Glenn Miller from when Glenn developed his apartments down here off Clay Street several years ago. And he had it platted and surveyed out in 2009 for what he named the Earl Russell Court was the name of the street where he built his apartments. And on the plat, he dedicated all streets, alleys, walks in that little subdivision to the city as a public right of way. Well, Mr. Miller happened to also be the county or the city attorney at the time, and he said, "Sometimes you're your own worst client." He forgot to bring it up to the city council and make sure that they accepted that street into the city street index. So, I pulled the statute on that. Really, once it's made dedication in public records like that, it tends to be part of the city that's opened up to the public after five years. But there's also a recommendation here that the mayor sign off on it or be adopted by ordinance. And I think that's what he would like to do, is go ahead and have the city officially adopt it so he can say it is a city street subject to public services. So I can draft an ordinance for the next meeting if that's what you all wish to do. I didn't get a chance to draft it before this one.
All right, the other options are?
On this, well...
We're better off than that.
It's been for...
Yeah, well, I would probably, because it does necessarily make reference to adoption
by ordinance, though I do think that it could be by general use by the public over time. I mean, it's kind of one or the other. It may be such a fact that had this been presented to you back on the survey plat, it does make provision that the mayor could just sign and approve the map and have it recorded. So I'll ask Mr. Miller if he prefers a quicker and easier way would just be a resolution recognizing it. And if that's what he prefers, then I'll bring that to the council.
So we've got some kind of a record here in the office of that easement.
Right. And what he would like, though, is at least something on tonight's record where the council would approve to go ahead and accept that so that he can...
What's the name of it?
Earl Russell Court.
Everybody know who we're talking about? Before you get to the Health Department, as you're going out Clay Street, those apartments on the right-hand side across from me is Hartford Church. Those are the ones we're talking about.
There's a sale on that? Somebody got one up for sale?
He does, I guess.
Yeah, they're good to take care of.
That's why he'd like something on tonight's record if the council would make a motion to adopt that as part of the city right. That way, at least it's in the minutes.
Okay. All right, will somebody make that motion then?
I'll make the motion, and we made that little court, Earl Russell Court.
Adopt it into the city as a city street.
That's what it is, to make it a city street.
Oh, okay, to make it a city street.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Is there any additional cost associated with drainage? Because there's a lot of stuff going on there.
I believe he had it curved and it's already on the city server. My understanding is the city has actually been plowing it for snow and treating it similar to a city street for the last several years. It's just never been...
As long as there's not a major infrastructure issue, it wouldn't even be addressed.
No worse than any of the others. No worse than...
I don't think it is, because actually that original plat, he was going to double the number that he had out there.
I will say, I mean, he did it right when he did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's plenty of room for more apartments to be put in there.
And they're handicap accessible, well, except for the first building that he built that and then realized that he didn't. But the rest of them are, so...
Okay. All right, then, all in favor of the motion, signify with up with the hand. Thank you. All in all, all right, anything else you have for us?
Not right now.
Okay.
Tell Glenn that's just one more thing he's indebted to me for.
All right, take a look at our financial statements then at this time. Have any questions about... The bank balances are kind of a fudel. That's what there were at that particular day. We've since used a lot of money out of those accounts. There's nothing like those totals right now, but... And the rest of the financials, if you have any questions about any of those. Getting that time of the year when it starts to become crunch time for us regarding revenues and expenses. When you feel like you've looked them over, I'll entertain a motion regarding adoption of those financial reports.
I'll make the motion to accept those reports.
Second? Second, but there are any discussion regarding these financials? If not, then all in favor of accepting those financial reports, up with the hand. Thank you. All in all, all right, floor now is going to be open for old business. First item is the ordinance regarding the property taxes, ordinance 2019-03. Somebody will read that and will entertain a motion to adopt it, accept it. Mayor Bell, you going to read that for me?
Sure. Ordinance number 2019-03, an ordinance leaving Edwardland and Texas for general municipal purposes for fiscal year of January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, on all taxable property within taxing jurisdiction of the city of Hartford. On each $100 of the fiscal year 2019, assessed valuation as follows: On real property, 40.9 cents; tangible and personal property, 29.25; motor and water craft, 22.8 cents, including real and personal property of public service companies.
Okay, then entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I make the motion.
Okay, second? All right, tell me, second. Is there any discussion regarding this? Okay, then entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Okay, then entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Okay, then entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Second? Second, but there are any discussion regarding these financials? If not, then all in favor of accepting those financial reports, up with the hand. Thank you. All in all, all right, floor now is going to be open for old business. First item is the ordinance regarding the property taxes, ordinance 2019-03. Somebody will read that and will entertain a motion to adopt it, accept it. Mayor Bell, you going to read that for me?
Sure. Ordinance number 2019-03, an ordinance leaving Edwardland and Texas for general municipal purposes for fiscal year of January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019, on all taxable property within taxing jurisdiction of the city of Hartford. On each $100 of the fiscal year 2019, assessed valuation as follows: On real property, 40.9 cents; tangible and personal property, 29.25; motor and water craft, 22.8 cents, including real and personal property of public service companies.
Okay, then entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I make the motion.
Okay, second? All right, tell me, second. Is there any discussion regarding this?
Nor my taxes, I have no discussion.
Okay, so I know whenever I mention this to people that were doing our taxes, you get quite a shocked look on people's faces, so it's kind of unheard of, but I think it's a step in the right direction for us.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Lisa and I, what, four years ago, five years ago, went to Grand and talked to him about lower taxes. And his response was what, Lisa? He had never had anybody come talk to him about lower taxes in a while, never, in the history of the years he's worked there, so...
Should make this a little more acceptable to businesses that want to come locate in Hartford, hopefully.
And residents, I'm looking.
Oh, yeah. Most of them won't realize it. They're still complaining. All in favor of accepting this motion to adopt this ordinance, up with the hand. Thank you. Motion's carried, announced. All right, next item of business, adoption of... This is a second reading again. Yeah, always your second reading. Adoption of the ordinance 29-04 regarding the golf carts, so can you all read that for us, please?
City of Hartford, ordinance 2019-04, an ordinance to amend portions of the ordinance number 2011-09 regarding the regulation and operation of golf carts on designated city streets to comply with the KRS 189.286, as well as to amend both ordinances number 2011-09 and ATV ordinance number 2016-06 to establish that permits will expire July 1 of each year.
All right, motion to adopt this ordinance?
Make a motion and adopt this ordinance.
All right, sir, second?
That's it.
All right, any discussion regarding this? Of course, all we're doing is bringing our ordinance in line with the actual state regulations, state revised statutes, so... Any other discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, up with the hand. Thank you. Motion's carried. Okay, and finally, ordinance 2019-05. Second reading for that. Tell me, read that for us.
An ordinance imposing parking restrictions on portions of Center Street and downtown Hartford for the convenience and safety of citizens.
Okay, motion to adopt this ordinance?
Make the motion.
Mayor Bell, second. Tell me, all right, discussion regarding this?
Now, is this this side of Main Street or on the other side?
It's both sides, actually, of it. As far as enforcing it, we almost have to wait until this other parking lot becomes available and then also the one down behind.
You go around a courthouse, you know, it's tight squeeze getting through there sometimes the way you park on both sides.
Well, this lot will open up, will remove a lot of the parking from people who work in the courthouse. They'll be able to get off the street. And then the others down on West Center Street will have, we're trying to work out a deal for the parking lot behind the Christian Healthcare, whatever that is now, or the old one, we're working on a deal there to try to make that accessible to those people who are parking on West Center right now. So as soon as we get these two lots finalized, I mean, we've taken a bunch of bricks out of these buildings over here on the corner, and they were supposed to have been torn down a week or so ago, but rain and everything, I guess, has delayed that.
City workers taking it down?
Pardon?
Is the city workers taking it down?
No, we took the bricks out for our use on Main Street in the sidewalk project, but the county is actually taking it down. Now, we will help them to some extent. We're hauling off some of the debris down into the lagoons for them, so to help fill in the lagoon as well. But a lot of it will stay right there in the basement to fill it up. All right, any other discussion regarding this one? It does create one 15-minute parking space next to the corner right there at West Union and Main Street. Okay. All right, all in favor of adopting that ordinance, up with the hand. Thank you. Motion's carried, announced. All right. Under new business, I have two new appointees to the planning and zoning, Will Duff to the commission and Robbie Ayer to the board of adjustments. We'll take those one at a time. I need a motion to accept Will DePuckett as a Hartford representative under the planning and zoning commission.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, David, any questions or comments? Discussion?
That's good, I think she'll be good on that.
Yeah. Okay, if there's none, then all in favor of accepting her. Thank you. Motion carried. And then the board of adjustments, Robbie Ayer, need a motion for that?
I want a motion.
Okay, David, second?
I'll take him.
Okay, Jerry, any discussion there? You know, everybody know Robbie? It's Ann, Dr. Ann Ayer's husband. Okay.
I don't know him, but...
Yeah. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor, up with the hand. Thank you. Motion carried. All right, and now we come to downtown parking. All right. Downtown parking, you want to discuss anything?
I think that's why they're here.
Okay.
Of course, the ordinance you just voted on is the one thing that we were concerned about. And I do want to make a correction, it's not West Union and Main, it's Center and Main and the territory.
I mean, yeah, West Union is...
I just didn't want anybody to be...
Right, West Center.
misled.
Right here. Okay.
I mean, we all know that the streets are tore up, a lot of streets, but the sidewalks tore up and people are being displaced and parking, but, you know, we've got, you know, we've opened up, Claudia's got her shop down there, we're just, we'd like to be able to have places for painters to park. We are fortunate, both of our businesses come from the people that's already downtown. But, you know, again, as I mentioned, I think in the meeting I had to before this, we've always wanted to see Hartford bring business in, get revitalized, it's one of the reasons why you just passed the ordinance to lower taxes. But sometimes you've got to be careful what you ask for, you might get it, and because of that, consequences kind of let parking be an issue. I would like to see the police police it in some regard, not just for parking, but for proper use of our streets. Every day you can stand down there and watch the number of cars that are going the wrong way, I don't know why, coming up Center Street, running the red light, going on out. You know, for years, when I owned and when I was both an employee and owner of teen drugs, it constantly happened. We're very fortunate, nobody's really got bad work, but I think enforcing and policing the parking is an issue, and making sure people are going up and down on our thoroughfares properly is also an issue. And I also, while we're on it, is there plans to resurface Center Street when all this is done? Because you've got to spot that or at least the length of that table and that wide breadth also, or I guess the sewer or water lines were broken, had to redo that.
Yeah, they're going to have to, the contractor will have to resurface that. I don't know, I imagine they'll probably fill it in with concrete once, once they...
No, I'm not talking about the cut across, I'm not talking crosswalk.
Okay.
So on Center Street, you got the crosswalk where you had the powell run from one block to the next.
Right.
Then years later, years, a couple, three years ago, when we laid, when we did all that on the side there, there's been a black cop there, it rocked there, and then down there by, where your office, down there, down where Guardians Tourist Home used to be, there's a good-sized place there that the city, I guess, tore up. So Center Street is pretty well tore up from front all the way to one east to the other.
That's in the sidewalk though, isn't it? Down there to the hub?
No, it's in the middle of the road.
Or is it down the street? Oh, yeah, I know where you're talking about, over on the side toward the parking lot, the big parking lot.
So, I mean, you've got, so, I mean, so basically, no roads tore up, so, I mean, we all want to know that they're working on it, but at some point, is it going to be resurfaced?
Yeah, yeah, we've got money to do that. But that little strip right there, where they took the utilities across from block to block, that'd be the contractor to do that.
Yeah, I respect that.
We'll have to do, we'll have to do that.
The cost of all the patching and everything been done, I didn't know if it would be appropriate once they get that done to the resurface of Center Street. Was there anything else along that we needed to...
You all had mentioned parking. It's an issue.
I mean, parking is an issue, I mean, the hospital, I've talked to the director at the hospital, I mean, I work with her, they're trying to displace me and their employees on the other side as possible or at the lower lot.
Right.
Tara and I both spoke with Steve Wiggins, and I think Tara's still working on drafting something, is that correct?
Been a little busy, but...
But I think once these, once these two parking lots are useful, you know, for...
That helps, yes.
Then we'll be able to...
But don't forget, I've checked where Pro Care Home Health has been closed, or Christian Care.
Yeah.
Now Caretakers is reoccupied with the building, they've got several employees in that building, so that parking lot may or may not be quite as...
Well, they've got quite a few places up under the...
Yes.
Back, see it there. I think there's probably at least 30 to 40 places that are going to be available if we can ever get that worked out right there, which we're...
And something else that would help is when all this is done, is parking spots can be restripped, because people really don't know where to park.
It's on the, it's on the, work for the first next week if it doesn't rank.
And don't forget, also, on the other side of rural Commonwealth Community Bank, it used to be on Washington.
Yeah, we'll try to get all of Main Street where there is parking locations like that. We've got a striped Caper's Lot, I can even refer to it as Caper's Lot, Lot next to Caper's.
It's the city's lot, right?
It could be Laker's Lot, you know?
I'll bring it up on the subject.
Yeah.
Since it's on the subject of parking and he brought up parking enforcement and things of that nature, I don't know if several have heard, but there was a court of appeals out of Michigan, which is ours, it's our federal circuit, that ruled that chalking tires is unconstitutional.
That what?
That chalking tires is unconstitutional.
Invade your privacy.
Now, whether I agree with that or not is moot, because I don't sit on the federal court of appeals, but, so there's been a lot of question lately about what municipalities in our particular circuit is going to do to enforce parking. And I think right now, the primary ways that most cities are looking at is either parking meters or taking pictures.
It should get parking meters.
But, I mean, honestly, taking a picture and documenting when the picture was taken and looking, I mean, it's pretty easy to see when a car, whether they've moved or not according to the picture. So if there, if there are any questions regarding enforcement of that, that probably would be the primary, more, I guess, constitutional at the moment way of doing that.
Can I bring up another parking thing? Well, it's not a parking, it's a driving. When did we cut off access to the post office?
Cut off access to the post office?
Yeah, there is a sign, right, as you turn in to go to the post office, or where I turn in to go to the post office, between there and the coffee shop, there's a little sign, and there's two little signs, one of them says, "One-way, do not enter," and they're not very big, they're not as big as the stop sign.
It's the, they're trying to put in a drive-thru for the Copacabana. It's wide enough right there that you can have two lanes of enter and exit, you also have a one-way lane next to Copacabana.
Yeah, well, it says you can enter there, you just can't enter on the by-side of the Copacabana.
You want now? I'm not picturing...
You know where the post office is.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And then there's a wide entrance, and, you know, people just drive everywhere.
That's right.
Okay, that's where I'm talking about.
That's parking lot, for a little sec.
And the green on 231 in front of the post office says, "Do not enter one-way."
It's a one-lane right next to Copacabana where they're trying to...
No, it's on the green, it's, you don't enter that at all.
Did the city put up...
You enter on the one-way street going that way on the other side of Copacabana. It says "Dinner" over there.
Did the city put up a sign? As I was saying, that's a private law.
Well, regardless of what you do, make the sign big enough for even the old people to see, I'm talking about a little bit.
The city didn't put up a sign.
And as I was driving here, I thought, oh, thanks, it's what, you're not in?
And you passed going along, right?
And I was going to the post office.
I think what they're trying to do is develop a travel pattern coming in on the Beaver Nam side of Copacabana, going around.
Who is trying?
They are creating a drive-thru.
They're creating a drive-thru.
So?
Well, they're trying to create around their property there.
Well, that's fine.
Okay.
Why can't I enter there by the post office?
You can.
No, you can't, it says, "Do not enter." You want to see a picture of it?
I could find either, right?
Okay, yes, and, but it says, "Do enter on the one-way," well, they're trying to develop that, I wouldn't want everybody pulling in there that comes in there.
Oh, that's just for Copacabana traffic.
Well, it certainly doesn't say that, because it's the same little red sign.
Okay, well, if the city did, it'd be a great big white sign.
Well, I would hope so. Well, who did it then?
It's a private law, it's a Hayward's law.
Yeah.
Well, I can't call Hayward, as we all know.
I'd say Glenn put it up to try to develop a pattern, traffic pattern around Copacabana.
Well, he's going to cut the post office off, so it doesn't matter to me if you don't want the post office anymore in Hartford, they're looking for excuses to close them anyway.
Maybe the city can recommend they strike that area for the elderly, then...
Well, it's not just the elderly, I mean, you know, it's like, it's like Dodge Dart, when you go in there anyway, you've got to look every which way behind you.
Yeah.
But, but that's not helping, I mean, you put up a damn sign.
We can, we can do some striping there to help alleviate that problem, I think, so...
Well, can I go down and have my screwdriver take this out?
Oh, he's a disaster. That's called vandalism.
That's where you need your golf cart, you just cut across the yard.
That's right.
That's the way I do. Go across the yard.
But Karen's the one that called me, and I went down there and I thought, dang, she does know what she's talking about. And I've been pulling in and out there just to see, and I went and go down there and see how many people pay attention to it.
Okay.
Not very many that I've seen so far.
Not too many paying attention to stop signs or anything in the city.
Penny brought it to your attention, thank you.
Okay, sure. All right, I recognize Claudia to, I sent Glenn, I mean, Sean, yeah, I guess I mean names on my head. Sean was here earlier, and I didn't know that there was going to be a meeting tonight of you all to come and do this, but you can go ahead and, and talk about what you all have discussed and ideas that you've got. And what, what's in regard to, because some of these may not know what I know, okay?
Well, mainly, we want to get started early and not be with the Hartford Festival, which we are potentially renaming the Sorheads Festival. But we want to do more to draw little ones, and to tell any of you a little bit about myself, I do pottery and teach classes at the Pottery Guild, so we just want to, I've done a little bit of some event, but I just want to help out, and he and I have just talked briefly over the phone, and we want to meet to get together, and my babysitter is on but, um, seems like fast, so, we're gonna be talking more.
What she's talking about is that, uh, we've had some interest from, uh, Sean Lynn, who had the Lynn Jackson store right down here on, you know, right next to the, mm, real estate business, okay? He came in, we talked about the Harvest Festival, what we used to call the Harvest Festival. Claudia's volunteer to work with him, so we've got two people now, the starting of a group of committee to, uh, put this festival together, and the decision was made to, let's change the name of it to the Sorehead Festival, and try to, you know, bank on that idea, try to build up, you know, some sore head, uh,
Yeah.
Interest.
Yeah.
It's branding.
I mean, it's, it's more than actually beyond that sore head, that idea that we talked about.
And to spread the word more via social media, and have just consistent branding, yes. Um, so, that's one of our goals, for sure.
The other, I mean, EDC, when we discussed this, I mean, you know, we kept, we kept throwing names out, and the one name was that, we kept, and they brought, I think it was actually Mary Vella, or maybe I've wronged, said the name of the Sorehead Festival, because that is unique to the city of Hartford.
Right.
You know, I mean, so it's, so I think it was what the sore, the sorehead festival at Hartford, or something along that line, I forget exactly the terminology that we came up with, but something along that line. You remember Mary Vella? Something along that line.
Sorehead Festival, I thought, or something like that.
But it's just an attempt to build on this brand, to try to incorporate not only with this festival, but they even talked about recognizing businesses on a periodic basis, and, uh, coming up with a, a sore head, image, model, three-dimensional, uh, and so we're, they're gonna offer some type of a contest, uh, to,
Draw the character that,
To get some people's ideas about what a sore head looks like. Uh, David Coleman was the leading.
I'll take that. I thought we were just going to give Mary Vella's picture.
Going down the wrong way.
It's going down the wrong way.
Look at a screwdriver.
But seriously, though, they're trying, we're just deciding this is something that Hartford is associated with, let's just run with it, and try to generate, uh, some image, you know, that would be conducive to billing, uh, just a camaraderie among the citizens, uh, you know, helping us just kinda unite behind something, so I think it's a good idea. And so, uh, Claudia and Sean are bouncing ideas off each other, Sean's wife is contributing to this as well, and so, they're coming up with a lot of ideas that will try to appeal to most people. Of course, we're still going with the Merchants Festival in November, almost gonna take care of that. I've talked to her about doing this, but I don't think she can do both, that's just too much planning, so.
Are you still planning on the new festival, is it gonna be the two days?
Yeah.
The Friday and Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's what's in the works, and we're here to try to promote that. If you got anything else you want to add?
Not at this time.
Then you can be excused if you want to take a little fell, hold it.
He's calmed down.
He's calmed down now, so. All right. Uh, anybody have anything you want to bring up? I've got just a report, uh, we've got a change order to the work, the sidewalk project. Uh, it's a change order in our benefit this time, we've cut out part of the project, uh, and it ended up saving us fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-four cents, so, that's a nice bit of change order news.
What was changed, what was cut out?
Well, we had the sidewalk going all the way down past the, the sewage treatment plant's pump out here, the last one. And while they were down there working, uh, Kevin came up from the wastewater plant and said, you're putting the sidewalk over, well, by our major lines, and it was running with the line, and, so if they had any problems, we were gonna have to tear the sidewalk up, so I said, and it wasn't lining up with what we hoped to be, the sidewalk going down to the side of sixty-nine all the way to the, to the ramp down there.
Okay.
So, I said, well, why don't we just stop it right here, right now, there was a, uh, they put in a storm drain that was on the schedule, so they went ahead and did that. But what we're gonna have to end up doing is, where they are now, to avoid that pipe, we stopped about three feet short of the manhole, and what they'll end up doing is going, making an angle over, and then they'll be lined up with what will hopefully be the sidewalk all the way down, Trail Town Project sidewalk, all the way down to the pole ramp. Uh, but we had to wait there until Highway Department builds us out a shoulder for the sidewalk to, right now, it was going down through the edge of the bean field, and so that wasn't working, so.
Yeah, that's real low there.
Yeah. We gotta wait till the shoulders built out there, and then we can go ahead and then do a sidewalk from where it ended up. So it saved, it saved some money there, of course, they had to redo it. So, an entrance ramp over here, right across, uh, well,
In front of the,
Lawyer's offices down there, you know.
Yeah, yeah, right, that, almost that alley right in that area.
There's a, there was an entryway goes up, it looks like a driveway to that house, but it's not, it's an alleyway. And when it was initially put in port, it was too steep an angle, and people that were trying to go up it were dragging, dragging everything underneath the car, you know, transmission differential, everything. So they went in, and we took, took that out, and just made us just a straight ramp now, to make it up that driveway, because people were using it to get into parking, you know, houses right there on that, uh, West Union. But it, the sidewalk now goes up, and you have to walk on the ramp, and then get back on the sidewalk again, so, created maybe a little problem there, but it's all of it, it could be dealt with, it was just too steep coming off the street to keep the sidewalk there. So anyway, that, those two things were removed from the project, and then just poured another concrete there, which wasn't too big a deal for us.
Okay, makes sense.
I've asked the contractors to look at the side twice as nice, on the side next to, toward Brandon Thomas's service station, on that side right there. I've asked them to give me a price on putting in a four-foot sidewalk, because this is terrible right now, I mean, it's broken up and everything. To put a four-foot sidewalk there, and then concrete down to the edge of the pavement, and that way we could create about four or five angled parking spaces for the twice as nice there, which should help their situation, parking situation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, on the subject of that sidewalk, I'd like to commend the city workers, with Jason and his crew, for, some folks have never laid pavers before, I think it looks really nice downtown, as they've done.
Yeah.
It really enhances the look.
It looks extremely nice, I mean, they had never laid stone before, and it looks, it was nice.
And we're really not finished, because we've gotta put some, the polymeric sand in there to seal it, you know, and make it much more resistant to water, uh, set in there, so we've still got that little bit to do.
May I comment along?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yesterday I came up to see you, and I think you were listening for rain.
Right.
Did you get the envelope left?
I did.
Uh, that was out of courtesy, I did not, I want you to understand that. Tara and our partners own more properties, we own three pieces of property downtown Hartford, with her law office, the two thirty Main Street, which is El Citizens Bank, and then two doors down is two twenty-six Main. And since the sidewalk work has been done, Jack Hammering, the sidewalks have been, one of the new sidewalks, we've had considerable water coming in, two twenty-six Main, uh, and, uh, two thirty Main, where the old bank is, had water coming in, particularly after the first, like, the sidewalks were laid. We addressed it with the mayor, and we addressed it with the contractor. They went in there and they put NP1 sealers, because a lot, there was a lot of cracks between the sidewalks and the walls. The bank building does not have active water, I haven't been down there today after last night's rain, does not have active water coming in anymore. It still has moisture coming in, but that bank building is a hundred and ten years old, and anybody's, want to talk to anybody that's ever been associated with the bank, it has never had water in that bank building at all, none, zero.
I think he's planning, Blake's planning on bringing fans to put down into your basement.
To help dry things out?
To force moisture out the back door there tomorrow, I think, is what he's planning on doing.
So, we have still moisture, two twenty-six, we still have active water coming in. And, you know, we're talking about old buildings, and we're talking about buildings now that Tara and I have invested quite a bit of money in renovating. Our concern is that, that if the water doesn't get stopped, the construction will cost damage to our building, not a lot, a lot of mold and mildew. Uh, we forwarded three letters, one to the mayor, one to Mr. Blake Winston with, uh, KMAC Contracting, and one to David Howe, the building engineer. Uh, I'm gonna go on record to say that, you know, I sat on the council, we voted for the sidewalk grant, uh, the city's acting on our wishes, we contracted with an engineer to design it, and then we contracted with a contractor to do the sidewalk grant. You know, but we did have to put everybody aware that we are having issues, so, uh, there's no mouse on our behalf, other than we want our basements dried out, and we want the water to stop, and to be honest with you, I feel like it is an engineer's responsibility, either oversight on their behalf, and, and to remediate and to fix the problem. But I do feel like it was important that I, you, we let you be aware, and I want the council to be aware that it is a concern of our behalf.
I think where we're headed right now, from the way the discussion's been, is for, uh, those, those two planter boxes in front of the bank and from two twenty-six, I think they're gonna go ahead and just, right now, it looks like we're gonna just put bottom in them, and put brick in them, like the other sections down through there. Uh, maybe that, to try to maintain some, you know, some greenery, they may, they may try to get some concrete plants to set on those, you know, just plant flowers in or something like that, but that appears to be where it's headed right now, so. I mean, they're gonna keep, we're gonna do whatever it takes to try to stop, stop the water flow. I think the water flow to two twenty-six is coming in where the coal chute was.
Yeah, I, I think I showed you pictures, uh, water was actively coming in all, all the way along the front wall. Uh, since they've done some work, and the paper's been put in, and the caulking has been done, I've got pictures where there's obviously water in the floor, but we've got where the, where the, uh, coal chute was at, you can see where the water is seeping through, uh, through that section right there, so, uh, I can tell you the water infiltration is still there, it is not as bad as it was the first time or two, but unfortunately, any water is, it's not good.
We have quite a bit of mold, and there's some rot going on with the base of our steps, and that plate down there a little bit too, but.
And I want to reiterate, the bank, again, you can talk to anybody associated with the bank, it's never had any moisture. Two twenty-six, only place that two twenty-six ever had water come in was in the back, where the steps were. Of course, that's our responsibility, our former courtyard, we fixed that, uh, this water's coming from the front.
Is that two twenty-six, has it got a basement in there too?
Yeah.
Everybody down there's got basement, can you get to Jerry's?
And that was something that was a little alarming, is that the engineer made statement that they weren't aware that there were basements in these buildings. With all due respect, I would think that would be an important point that should not have been missed.
Sure weren't, weren't aware of any coal shoots.
No.
Uh, they caught, caught them off, off guard, because that wasn't expected, you know, uh.
I know they got a sealer, me and my bro's contractor in Georgia, and we use sealing when I go in there, help them seal the basements. They got a sealer that you can put in there, and it'll keep that water from coming.
Are they putting on the inside or the outside?
They got a, they got a foam that they put in there, and then they come back and seal it, and everything, and that water.
Yeah, but if it's on, if it's on the inside though, it's not gonna help, it's,
Well, I mean, what it's doing is keeping it from that moisture coming through the wall.
Right. But it's, it's still affecting those blocks that are, that are foundation, it's still affecting. I'm, I was hoping that there would be some more sealing they could do along, you know.
There are still, I've did look, there are, kind of tear that both, those, NP1, it's a self-leveling caulk, and there are still voids. And with the rains that we've had, some of these rains have been driving drains, so that water's being pushed in these, these crevices. So, you know, I'm not sure what the point of interest is, I'm sure some of the flower beds, some makes it become these weed holes, and some of them may be going through these cracks.
They'll keep working till they get, um, gonna get it right. We need to talk about some funds. Oh, okay, thank you. I told you about the change order, uh, don't have a copy of it, we sent it back in, didn't we? The copy of it, okay. Yeah, just need a motion to accept the change order, are you, are you in favor of a reduction of fifteen thousand, some odd dollars on our behalf? I got a motion in a second, all right, all in favor of accepting the change order, thank you. Okay, um, I'm thinking about how we can explain the years of borrowing from one fund to pay another fund's problem. Over the years, we've got three funds that generate money, and that's sanitation, water, and, uh, sewer, okay, they're the only ones that generate funds, other than general fund. But we've got other accounts, like cemetery account, and, uh, fire department, the police department, the maintenance. Those, those, those accounts are not, they don't generate funds, so, they get their money out of general fund. But what happens is, with, for years, they would take money from a fund that had some money, like sewer, and use it to pay maybe water, or use it to pay fire, or something like that. So you've got all these funds that have loaned other funds money. And it's a magnitude that almost was well over a million dollars, if I can count them all together, right?
It's a million seven, just for the general fund.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just a matter of bookkeeping, you know, from one of our fund sources to another fund that needed sources. Well, what it does, to an auditor, to CPA, they look at this, and they say, okay, this fund has got money owed to it from another fund, so it looks like account receivable, looks like an asset. This one over here's got the liability, and it creates, I mean, it's just, it's an accounting nightmare to me, really, is what it is. But that's the way they handle it, I'm glad I'm not a accountant, okay? But anyway, what the accountant was, you want to tell them, the accountant's recommending that over, over a period of, about two years even, that we gradually dissolve some of those, because it's our money anyway. That we gradually dissolve those, and put them back on even keel, and we quit talking about loaning money from one account to another account, we just simply transfer it, okay?
Makes sense.
All right. Uh, a lot of money has come out of occupational tax with the intent to pay it back. The problem is, water doesn't generate the revenue to pay back. You know, sewer, at times doesn't have, I mean, we've got to borrow to pay, You know, sewer, at times doesn't have, I mean, we've got to borrow to pay sewer bills, so sewer doesn't generate that money over to pay it back. So, he's recommending what we do is just, over a period of time, just gradually get rid of these loans here and there so that we eventually get back to just talk about transferring of funds and not talk about loaning our funds. Because if you loan it, the council says you gotta pay it back. All right? Now, you go ahead and explain. I've explained all I know about it, okay?
Well, going forward, unless the council member truly wants a loan, then in their motion, they can't say that they want it to be for occupational tax to loan the money to the general fund unless you're truly wanting it as a loan. The numbers have grown so exponential and all the others, even before occupational tax comes along, that it is, it's a huge number. And water, sewer, and sanitation, if it was just those three and you were working massage between those, but those are enterprise funds, that'd be okay. But it's not because we have used 1.7 million dollars of general fund since the books have started, of general fund money to pay two other funds. Occupational tax has used roughly almost $500,000 to assist other accounts, but that account was set up, that can only be done with a motion from the council. So, when council members have made motions for loans, those loans are on the books as loans. If they loan the money to water, water hasn't, since my tenure, ever had the funds to be able to pay back. So, if the loan is not truly a loan and needs to be forgiven, then we would have to have a motion to forgive that loan. But the loans are to such extent that you cannot, you would not want to do this over even a five-year period, you would want to do this gradually. If you just did occupational tax, it was 480, I think $4,000 that has been loaned out. So, what that means is if you were looking at the balance sheet of occupational tax, they have a receivable of 480 some thousand dollars. So, to take that out immediately will fall down to the bottom line. Now, if those funds could pay that back, we wouldn't be having this discussion. But I think everyone here's been here long enough to know that I don't foresee that water will have the ability to ever pay back occupational tax. Part of the money was, is actually for things that the water needed, some of the money was borrowed actually just to get through payroll until we got to the next property taxes. But it has become an issue with the auditors to the point that they're asking us to find a remedy, either to pay back, which is simple for them to say, or to forgive the loans.
And this didn't happen overnight, this has been going on for years and years and years, so, I mean, it's not.
That's one side, the other side though, to make sure everyone understands, it's not just the council that made the motions for loans. There's also the day-to-day activity. I've never been given authorization that if I, if we're trying to pay bills and we cannot pay those bills, then it's been always customary that I would go out and I would go to the fund that had the most funds and I would transfer those funds into the account that was needed. That would be set up on the books as a loan because I don't have authorization just to transfer it from one to the other. At least that's never in the minutes. Not sure if that's what you want, I'm just saying that is the way that this has happened. This happened two ways, one from council members making motions of setting loans up on the books, two from the day-to-day business in order to get the bills paid.
In the past, there's been the need or the step was taken to borrow money, to borrow, you know, $100,000 from the bank to make payroll, things like that. Last year, and we didn't have to do it because we took money from occupational tax, the loan from occupational tax. And this year, be the same thing, you know, that, right now, we're getting to the point where the property taxes that we raised back in October, November, you know, I guess pretty well depleted. The only thing we've got coming in on a regular basis is occupational tax and then the insurance premiums. Those are the major things that we have coming in, but they won't come in till the end of July, so.
Seems to me that there's an imbalance in the operating expense for those accounts, like are we, do we have the right things in those accounts? Are we putting expenses against those? Like if payroll is something that these accounts can't handle, then why isn't payroll just being paid out of the general fund?
Well, it's divided up.
Always.
Everybody who works in water is paid out of the water account. Everybody who works in sewer is paid out of sewer account.
But I'm challenging if the way that we're running the city is, does that make sense? Because if we're having to borrow money because of, we have too much expense here and it's not generating enough revenue, maybe shifting some of the way that we're booking those expenses would at least get it to a point to where it's gonna be slower, it's gonna take more time to do it, but it would, you know, start to build fund in those accounts and then they could then pay the loans.
I guess if you're looking, if we just look at water, we all know that water is always lost money. So, if water is losing money, then they're never gonna have the money to fund their own payroll or to pay their own expenses.
Yeah.
So, who comes?
The general fund's covering it anyways.
Water, sewer, and sanitation though are enterprise funds, so we want to try to keep it among those three because it costs money to make water.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? The general fund, their primary money comes from property tax. If you don't pay your property tax bill, it's not costing us anything. We're not starting up the water plant, we're not putting chemicals in it, it's just sitting there. So, they're two totally different animals from an accounting standpoint. Yes, there has been many times that the general fund has given money to water for their payroll, okay? But it's frowned upon, but, I mean, we do the best that we can. But water will never have the funds until we raise rates, we make water more efficiently, we change something, so therefore someone has to assist water. And that's just the one example. The other scenario that we just had that was quite large was regional wastewater invoices and we were behind. And we actually have an account called the occupational tax sinking fund. We emptied that account and paid every bit of those funds, which is basically rainy day, ice storm type scenario. We emptied that account and gave that in lieu of the regional wastewater invoices, okay? So, that's a piece of this. We are now building that account back up for the rainy days. But the way occupational taxes was set up was that unless it is basically administrative things like the payroll for, to run occupational tax, office supplies, other than that, no funds are spent on occupational tax until it comes through the council. Now, the other accounts are set up that way, okay? So, every time basically the occupational taxes funds have been used, it's done from a council member making a motion for a loan. So, when it loaned money to water, how will water ever pay them back? I mean, that's the problem.
Are there, are there accounting principles that you have at all that require you to separate each payroll account by the, the activity it's in? Like why can't all the personnel come out of personnel in general administration and pay, you know, the, all of the other costs too? And, I mean, I know it can be done because then the, whatever account numbers decide, decide that particular position, you would know which account it came out of.
Okay.
Would that solve any of the problems?
It wouldn't be according to GAAP.
Who?
The G A S B because the enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, and sanitation, you cannot do that. The labor that is in those type funds is handled differently than the labor that's in the general fund. So, because at the end of the day, it's basically three businesses.
Okay.
That's water. And if you do not put their payroll into water, you don't have an accurate financial statement.
But you can put their payroll, numbers into the financial.
I don't think you would be able to do things like set water rates and sewer rates and sanitation rates until you knew what the actual cost was and what the actual revenue was for each one of those departments.
Right. But I'm saying, your payroll account out of the general fund could be set up in a way that you could pick out those payroll costs to associate with all of these funds.
Yeah. But why not just take the money that's, that's needed for the short accounts, the accounts that are short, why not just take it out of occupational tax and do the paying right there and still leave your, all your accounting, the way it's already set up, leave it like it is and just get the money over here to take care of shortfalls.
I think, I kinda agree, I think that makes more sense to do that because if we're ever questioned, hey, why are you raising rates? You can basically say, hey, look, this is our total operating expense. And although we're not meeting it, we are, you know, we have to take a rate increase.
When I first came, all the costs that were associated with sewer were not actually going into sewer and it made it really difficult. And the guy sitting next to me was a council member and he actually made that motion that we would put all the expenses in sewer, into sewer, so that we would really know where we are because unless you do that, there's no way for you to know if you're making money or losing money. So, because at that time, pretty much all the cost for sewer and water was running through the water account. Because the thought was is, well, we're not making enough to cover sewer anyway, so let's go ahead and run it through. So, George came up with the idea, says let's, let's put sewer expenses.
What you would have to, Mayor Bell, is do that every month.
Uh-huh.
Okay? Well.
I understand.
Yeah. It's all right, but, you know, it is, I think we're just creating just a little extra work, you know, to bring, sort of add up the payroll, you know, into each account each month and see where you stand.
But, but don't misunderstand, it's not just payroll. If they went out and bought a $7,000 sewer pump.
Majority goes to the sewer account, I understand that.
But, no, I mean, and then sewer doesn't have the money to pay for it, okay?
Uh-huh.
Then someone has to put the cash into the sewer account for that check to flare, and that would be on that given day, it would be whoever had the funds. And there's, like, if you were to look at the cash balances that's on that piece of paper versus, that's like a few moments ago compared to what they were when we did the bank renovation, there's a huge variance. So, so that $7,000 sewer pump, someone has to give the funds in order for that to be paid and either that's gonna be set up as a loan or we don't pay the bill. So it sits there until they have the funds.
So for the budget next year, there's, how do you fix the problem, but then there's how do you prevent the problem?
Right.
So, how do you prevent the problem for the budget next year? Do you just?
I think we call it loans for one thing, you just call it a transfer.
And just approve the transfers?
Yeah. And don't expect it to be paid back and show up as a, as a debit on, on these different accounts, you know, or it shows up as an asset over here.
Right now, you're, I think when we did the last water increase, you're looking at probably what, 20 to 25,000 loss every month in water?
Before the increase.
And we were able to tighten that gap a little bit, but it was just gonna be way too high of an increase.
Well, yeah, part of it's the city's problem, like we have issues with water and we don't have enough people in the community that are offsetting the cost of the system. Like if we had more people here, we could then offset some of that, so.
The basic, like payroll would be just over more people.
Exactly, yeah.
So, the idea is the more growth you can get in the city, obviously you can use more water, sell more water.
But if we know, like.
Water companies.
Like we know at the beginning of the year, hey, we're gonna, if we're losing 25,000, we should just plan on moving 25,000 to those counts on a regular basis, you know?
Well, that's.
Because we're doing it anyways and it's not a loan, it's part of the way the city's running.
That brings up another point. And the prior council had said that occupational tax would give $6,500 to water every single month until new water rates were put in place, okay? So we did that and then the new water rates kicked in, we stopped at 6,500 transfer each month. Also, there was a motion made that we would have approximately $50,000 from occupational tax for infrastructure items that would be water and sewer, okay? That all ended, actually I think that we went through that at the end of, this is, we went through the end of April. So there is no more funds and that's one thing that was learned, learning the mayor about was because you've had 6,500 to assist in water every single month. That's fine. You've had an extra, approximately 50,000 staying there for any infrastructure, for example, the 70,000 dollar say pump. Now, that's fine. So, there's nothing assisting water. Yet we do know for a fact water is gonna lose money and is losing money, so how do we cover those expenses? We can either set that up as a loan or we can have a motion that we will transfer the funds to it.
In other words, what needs to be done to immediately help this problem is you need a motion that we stop calling it a loan and give Lisa the ability to transfer those funds over to the needy account.
Yeah.
And in the motions we make, we cannot call it a loan.
No.
We will just transfer the funds.
For example, if you were to buy a new fire truck and you wanted to loan the money to them to do that, that's, that's one of these that's set up, then that would not be in the motion, we wouldn't call it a loan, occupation of tax would give. That's something that we could, going forward, but.
We, going forward, we don't want to call anything a loan, loan that's an inter-agency transfer, right? So loans now should go off of paid period.
And these were over a period of time, realistically, some of these things that are called loans.
Okay.
So, does the loan have to be paid back from an accounting standpoint?
Yes.
It does unless there's a motion that the council forgives it.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at right now. Because the loans have gotten to such an extent, for example, like I said, there's 1.783 million that's due the general fund right now.
Is there a list of the loans that are on the book and then a recommendation on?
There's 132,000 that were added to it from July 18 to June, actually till today. And that's broken down to 97,000 of it went to water and 35,000 of it went to cemetery. The cemetery will never sell enough lots, lots and we hope that it does to cover the expenses.
Would look like all that ought to be under general fund in place that doesn't have enough to generate their own money?
Yeah, it's a matter of just keeping up with, you know.
You keep it up separate, but you know it's coming from the general fund, so that's where it's coming from anyway.
So, are we, are we better just to inflate the amount coming out of general fund so as an example would be 25,000 for water? You know what, we're gonna move 30,000 into the water account every month and it's gonna start to generate the money to pay back the loan or what's, what's the recommendation?
I'd rather, I'd rather just not do it on a routine basis, I'd rather just do it as needed.
Okay.
That way we can keep a better understanding of just, what is it costing us, where can we, how can we make this better, you know? How can we cut back on our expenses? You know, if you just transfer automatically, then you won't know about your rates, you know, whether, I mean, it kind of skews everything to, you know, to false report type thing, I mean, just.
So from the way the city's gonna operate, then they would monitor those, hey, we transferred 25,000, we transferred 30, we transferred 40, are we getting better, are we getting worse? And what are the things that they need to do to try to improve upon that?
Yeah.
Like is that visibility gonna be there so that those groups work on improving the systems rather than just accepting it?
She does have these transfers here, but they're listed as loans, you know?
There is a transfer account. There is a transfer account, and there are loan accounts.
Okay, okay, so there's visibility to that.
In fact, you can see it on the budget. You can see where occupational tax is transferring out, you can see where cemetery is being transferred in as a revenue, the amount for the molly. So, there are those accounts. It's just mainly, what will we do right now with what we have on the books? And you cannot, if you were to clean this up for the general fund, Wendy comes back in here the next time for the audit, if I clean up that 1.7 million, I understand the general fund just lost 1.7 million dollars. No one wants that. That's why there had to be probably eight, at least eight to 10-year smoothing of some of this. We could maybe do occupational tax for $400,000. But that's probably all we would need to do in this year. And then next year, which is in three, four days, then we could hit another piece. But I can't do any of that if I don't have a motion to do that, because they are true loans until the council forgives it. And this isn't something that happened in any...
State of the law, county of the law.
Yeah.
All right, you want a mo- loan, a motion?
That's what you want, the motion to forgive the loan.
I would...
To forgive the loan.
Over a period of time.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable seeing a forgiveness schedule.
Yeah.
I know it's a lot, right? So, it's like, hey, this is what we planned this time before I approved anything.
What about this? Since we're within just a few days, and tomorrow's Friday, and the last working day of the year, would anyone be willing to make a motion to just forgive the occupational tax, which is $483,000, $84,000? If so, that chunk could be in this fiscal year. Because then you're only gonna be able to do a similar amount probably from another account in the next year.
So, you're feeling, you're thinking that we would do around $400,000 a year until we get to that point?
I don't know what the magic number is. All I'm saying is, I know that tomorrow's the last working day, and if I could get some of it in this fiscal year, it would help smoothing a little bit. That's the only reason that I'm, and it doesn't have to be that.
Okay, I don't think the next one would be $400,000, I think it would be more like $100,000, something like that.
It could be whatever that you all agree upon.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we forgive the occupational tax loan at $400,000, whatever thousand it is.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there more discussion regarding... We're not exactly following Robert's orders, but that's, we can talk it out before we know how we're gonna make a motion. Nope, there's no more discussion. If you're in favor of doing that for right now, just, okay, thank you.
Like borrowing your kids' money, you can never get it back.
Yeah, but what they say, don't loan anybody any money if you can't stand the losing or something like that. Well, you know, it's just the level we face. Hopefully, the tax base is gonna increase. Of course, that means we'll have to adjust our tax rate, so... But, you know, a 4% increase every year in our revenue may help over a period of next 10 years, so...
We just need more people.
Well, yeah, long after I'm gone. All right. I got one more thing, and that was our siren. I don't know if you noticed in the financials, but we, our siren up here, we've got a couple sirens. This one up here on top of the old fire station is the one that covers, you know, the western part of the city. Became non-functional. And so, we had a fire sire, or siren company come through and do the whole county. And ours was included in that, it cost us $900, I believe, for them to... Actually, what happened was, they took the old siren down. And Beaver Dam had one that they weren't using, they had taken down. Went, they went to a solar powered one. And so, we have Beaver Dams right now that's on loan to us till they need it. It's working. Nobody ever said anything about the test on Friday, nobody ever noticed it wasn't blowing, I guess, or... So, anyway, I'm gonna look into rewiring. That's what the problem is with this one, they just had to rewire the motor that generates the movement. And I think it's a seven, seven-and-a-half horse engine, or motor, not engine. And so, I'm gonna look into getting it rewired so that we have that one. We've actually been, I think Charlie Shields was gonna include us in a grant request to get a new siren here. But I don't know how that's gonna turn out. But anyway, if I can get this old repaired for nominal amount, get it rewired and everything, then we'll have it available to us to use still, so... But that's, if you go around behind, go out the side of the library, and right there at the corner of the old fire station, you'll see our old siren sitting there on the ground, so, anyway.
If somebody hadn't halved it off of scrap metal.
Well, it'd take, it'd take a pretty good truck to get that thing picked up, because this...
If it could be done, you might figure out how to do it.
It's heavy, it's heavy. Of course, that seven-horse engine or motor sitting on it adds a little bit to the weight of it, so... Anyway, that's where we stand on that. I just, it was in the general fund report this time, I think it's $900, but... All right, anybody else have anything that you want to bring up?
I was in here Tuesday afternoon to pick up minutes, part of the agenda and things. Was talking to Sarah on Tuesday, and we had this big, long discussion over water bills and how long to give people. She had 86 calls to make to tell people their water was gonna be cut off.
Just as a courtesy call?
As a courtesy call. That does not account for her getting it all lined up and getting it to the people that need to get it to cut it off, or the people calling back and saying, "Oh, I just forgot." Like, that wouldn't make a difference. But that's worth noting, that that girl made 86 calls in seven hours and did everything else she had to do. They're the same people over and over and over again.
A lot of our problem is, we've got wrong numbers, we've got missing numbers, we've got people who don't have answering machines, you know, to leave a message, or the answering machine's full, or... So, I've told them, I said, "The ones that are consistently on the cutoff list, don't worry too much about them." But there are some legitimate people that, just for one reason or another, we had, one man was on vacation out in California, had been out there for a month, and on vacation. You know, some people that made a payment, but it was only a partial payment, you know? They were short $10, $11, you know? You'd hate to turn somebody off for that. So, we tried to make an effort to reach them. But the ones that's $70 to $100, $150 that are consistently, you know, were used to it, so we just pretty well go with the flow with them, so... But what else? I mean, when you talk about 86 people, this is what it looks like.
Mayor, where are you at on the sewer meter?
Uh, he hasn't called me back. The plans are that, you know, they're gonna, he's putting it together. He just had called me, told me how far along he is, everything like that. I did get a call today from the engineer who's redoing our...
Water.
A water tank. It looks like it's gonna be somewhere in that vicinity, about $300,000. He sent a preliminary engineering report to me tomorrow, he said. We don't really have, we won't be able to submit it to the Grand Water Management Council, which has to approve it before we send on to the Infrastructure Authority. And they don't meet again till September. So, hopefully, he's gotta, he's gotta take a piece of water to get their approval first before we'll take it over there and get the approval for the loan or the grant. The grant's about a 50/50 grant, you know, they'll grant us 50% of it. So, that leaves us about $150,000. Have to, we'll just take out a short-term loan and pay it back, you know, out of occupational tax over a period of months or a year.
That will have some water problems, too.
Yeah, well, our last report, we were, like, for one of the byproducts, and I get them confused. I think it's the HAA 5. Your, the limit is like .06, and our test came back .061 and .06... I can't remember, 29 or something like that. So, they're just barely over.
Yeah.
And, which is good.
But still, you have to notify everybody.
Yeah.
And it goes on the record.
Yeah, it does. Of course, we average it out over a year at a time, so we've had some good low ones. So, I think over, the average over the year is gonna be below what...
Good.
I think so. But regarding to your stated question, I will call it, I'll call it tomorrow, because I have it in queue today, and...
Well, I was just looking at the reports.
Yeah.
There's no rhyme or reason, we've had some terrain, and it just doesn't make any sense.
That thing saved us a bunch of money, wouldn't it?
I don't know, but I mean, it's just...
It'd be nice to know.
Yeah.
It would be nice to know exactly what's going on.
Well, I think, you know, once we put it in there, we know exactly what we're sending them. You know, there's no way that they should be able to charge us any more than what we're sending them. You know, we have more than their meter, it's because of I and I and their line, you know? Which is, it's hard to argue against, you know, so...
If it comes out against us that we're sending them less than what they said, we won't be mentioning that, will we?
Well, we're sending them less than what they said, hopefully, you know? But anyway, I think it'll pay for itself in relatively short time. I haven't talked to him about, lately, about the estimate, but it was up in that $45,000, $46,000, that's what he estimated after determining, after finding out that there was a free form, you know, box that you could put in the ground, electronics, their fee for doing it, everything, he talked about $46,000. It should pay for itself pretty quick. But I'll call, I'll call Steve tomorrow. Anybody else have anything? That's enough to entertain most of my adjournments.
I make the motion with your adjournment.
Second.
Second.
Take your pick, everybody. Call it a favor. Thank you. All right, thank you all.